Awesome. We're gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order, April 4th, 2023. So we've been planning and zoning meeting. Thank you all for showing up and attending. The first couple of things of business we've got, we need an approval of the agenda, this week's agenda. Anybody got any questions about it?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
And I'll second it.
Awesome, all in favor? So that's a, that one goes through. The next will be the approval of the minutes. These are from the meeting last week. So we got those in an email, they're also on our desk.
I asked the approval of the minutes from March 7th.
And I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. So that one carries too. Next, we're gonna move into the public comment section. So we allow anybody that's in the building or that might be in the public forums online to speak on topics of Woodfin, if they wish. Anybody here, are you here to speak in a public comment or in about a? Okay, perfect. I know the other two parties are here to speak on specific items. I'm assuming is anybody online that wants to speak? And I don't think I have to really. Cool. So with that, we're just gonna go ahead and open and close public hearing. Perfect. So now we'll move on to unfinished business. Ricky, if you want to come up and tell us what that is, the item number one.
Yes, sir. So we had the one item from Robin Hood, the ministerial review. The board of adjustment basically finished up their case. So Robin Hood is back before this board. The applicant asked that it be continued one more month. So kind of repeating item here. And I believe we have somebody from Jesse's firm that spoke last time, just to answer any questions. But I think they just asked at least May 2nd would be the next meeting, so continue one more time.
Okay. Did you guys have anything you want to add?
No, thank you very much. I think you covered it.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Thank you. I'm Hannah Mike Love here on behalf of the applicant, HS Robin Hood, owner LLC. Of course, you guys know Jesse well, he's my colleague, but out on vacation this week with his family. So I'm hearing issues. And as Ricky said, we just request a continuance until May. The applicant is in continuing discussions with the Bernstein's as well as CRLU. So we just want to be ready to engage this board in meaningful review as soon as those discussions wrap up. And, you know, be ready to strike, you know, as soon as possible. So we request that this board take the application up on May 2nd. Thank you.
So anybody got any questions for her before we let them sit down? Any questions?
Questions? Don't we have to make a motion to postpone it?
Yeah, I was just making sure you didn't have any questions for her before we did that. Cool. Awesome.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Now we can do that.
I recommend that we postpone the ministerial review issue on Robin Hood until the May 2nd meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor? So that one carries. So that will be moved to May 2nd. So now we're gonna move into our new business. We have two things on the agenda tonight. Thank you, have a great night. First one, Ricky, if you want to tell us about it.
Okay, so we have one conditional rezoning tonight off Reynolds Mountain Boulevard. It's currently zoned community shopping, but this request is for a large senior living facility. So just move on here. So it's already community shopping shown in red. And you can see the hatched area is the parcel as it is today. It has to go to a community shopping two designation because that's the district that allows for multifamily or residential uses. So residential is not allowed in CS itself. It also needs a CZ due to the size of the project. So that's the reason why we're here tonight, it's the size of the project. As you can see, to the east or to the right here, which is the school, that CS across to the south, there's other multifamily. And then to the west, you have the new hotel that's been under construction for a couple of years now. And then there's some retail businesses along Weaverville Road, which is the white line on the very left of the frame. And so we have an aerial. Now, keep in mind, this is like about a 2019, 2020 aerial. The parcel in question is the one in blue outline. Reynolds Christian Academy again to the right east, you can see like that almost star asterisk shaped building to the southeast is another congregate living facility. And then the dirt pile to the left again is the hotel. And you see some residential to the northwest. The closest residential appears to be like a few mobile homes immediately to the north. And just point that out, you see that there's Mountain Village or R7 to the north. So those properties require buffer and they show that in their site.
Did we communicate with those people by mail or whatever?
Yeah, everybody that was adjacent got a letter mailed. And they also, the applicant done a neighborhood meeting and they done that by Zoom. I think they had a couple of people show up, mostly I think people in the real estate field were interested in the project. We have not received any phone calls. We did post the site about 12 days beforehand, so it's been properly noticed. You should have in the package you've seen online, the site plan, so just kind of summing it up. It's a single four-story building that is 55 feet tall approximately. It's 157,323 square feet. Again, 152 senior living units. It's not actually what I understand from the applicant, it's not like individual dwellings, they're more like independent suites. So it's common facilities on the main floors where residents gather to either eat or recreate or have a few services provided there. Then I mentioned there's also indoor/outdoor common areas. They had mentioned like a barbecue pit, some benches, they could have access to the other back 40, the north side of the property, it's kind of wooded. Couple of things also to note, sidewalk, one of our first sidewalks to get on this stretch of road will be built on the frontage. That's kind of, if you look at the very bottom, there's kind of like a really solid black line, it's really hard to see, but that's the sidewalk with a buffer strip. And then we have retaining walls. That's probably one of the more larger or obvious portions of this project. They're still in the, what did I say, still in the stage of finalizing that out. There's a couple of walls to the east side of the site, the right, that are stacked, that could reach up to 35 feet cumulative height. They're behind the building or to the right uphill of the building. And then there's a larger wall, or should I say another wall to the left or west behind the hotel. That gets about 23, 24 feet. Again, they're trying to balance the fill on the site, so there's not much dirt coming in or much dirt leaving the site. And then again, last item, 138 parking spaces, which is below what you would normally see in a building of this size if it was like a regular residential complex. But their, their age profile, based on what I'm hearing, is less or lower car ownership, so.
Do you know if they're gonna have a bus or something to transport people? Because if they don't, how are they gonna?
Well, and speaking with the applicant, she's here, but she'll tell you they're, Christie's here tonight. I'm gonna try to say her name again, but I'm gonna get there before I introduce her. She'll forgive me if I mispronounce it, she's already said she would. They had told me they a lot of times will have activities, so residents will get on a van and they will take them elsewhere or go run parents. But a lot of things are handled onsite. So there's not much, there's some residents do have cars, but they're going to have a lot of amenities on property.
Right. I just see so many things being built that don't have enough parking spaces. I, that would be, that was one of the things I noticed in reading it.
Yeah. So I'll keep on moving here, I don't, I don't want to.
The 152, and I'll bring this question up later, but on the 152 senior living units?
Yeah, suites, yeah.
So that's 152 suites?
There's a mixture of one bedroom and, is it one bedroom, two bedroom, is that right, Christie? Yeah, studio, yeah.
So some of the 152 are gonna have two residents? I mean.
Or two bedrooms?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah, probably two residents or something. And so as far as, I don't want to present to the applicant because I know you have a lot of questions. That, their business, I should say, and talk to them, their business, they've been in business for multiple years, have multiple projects. So she's probably knows their model better than I do about the parking and what residents have onsite. So I'll let her speak to that. As far as modifications are requested, or you can think it's a variance that's granted through a rezoning process. They're increasing the building height from 35 to 55. We're reducing the parking, as you've noted, from 108 to 138. They're using LED light fixtures, which that's probably a better choice. Our code says high pressure sodium, tells you the age of our code, we need to update it, so. And then they do want to do a spotlight on the main sign in front of the project. That doesn't meet our code because it isn't fully shielded. And we've had some discussions, they're probably agreeable to, you know, providing something that's more downlit and full cutoff, but.
So the 55 feet increase in height, have we routinely approved that kind of an increase in height for a complex like this?
Well, I mean, I'm not sure the process that went through for the hotel, that was many years ago. But my understanding is that height exceptions before we had a conditional zoning process were like done through special use. And heights, a height deviation shouldn't be either approved by the fire chief, fire marshal. They either need a straight up variance or it needs to come through a legislative process that should be delegated to staff. And I can't answer, I don't know if Ms. Tuck knows about the hotel or how we've been doing height modifications.
Don't quote me on this, but I believe the hotel was approved as a condition use permit, so I think they got some sort of exception for that height. I would say when we look at height as part of a legislative application, which is what the conditional zoning is, you want to really look at sort of compatibility and impacts. So I think context is really important. And this parcel being just, you know, only one parcel away from Weaverville Highway, next to another four-story building is, kind of gives us the context that, you know, we feel like it's not out of scale or inappropriate for the area. We would not feel the same way about something that was perched much higher up on the mountain or, you know, in a surrounded by single family, you know, things of that nature. But we think in this context, it's supportable.
And the fire department has to sign off on it, right? Have you signed off on it? Okay.
I've traded emails, but I hadn't like filled out anything.
And that's just to make sure that it can be served from an emergency standpoint, so, yeah.
Thirsty on the spot, but is there another question that I can answer?
Well, I'm, I knew about the sidewalk, but I'm kind of curious if, because they really can't walk easily anywhere. But I guess you figured that out, I mean.
Well, it's gonna be the first of, you know, it takes some time to fill in sidewalks elsewhere. I mean, it's something that I experienced in other jurisdictions. You have a segment.
Right.
And people feel like it's sidewalk to nowhere, but over the course, that sidewalk may be there 50 to 85 years. And so eventually, as projects turn over.
Oh, no, I think it's, it's good. I just wish that we're going south, I guess, to Reynolds Village.
Ricky, you might want to talk about the.
Yeah. Yeah, so in looking at the site plan too, and this dog leg, you see there's like a flagpole or a stem that goes down to Weaverville Road. What we've kind of deducted is that over the course of years, as development occurred, there was like bites out of tracks. And the right of way for Reynolds Mountain was dedicated, but for some reason, this was never cleaned up. So this pipe stem is actually at most the width of the right of way that's been dedicated to the town for maintenance. So we have a public street that we are maintaining, pushing snow paving. But the applicant has this little small finger that runs underneath the street. And there's driveways that cross them from the hotel and the restaurant to access the right of way in the public street. So one of the things we would also ask for, and I think they're agreeable to, is to kind of clean this map up by dedicating the right of way and getting that look correct. As you see Weaverville Road immediately to the west, there's like a gap. The roads in its own looks like parcel. That's the way this road should look too. So this would be the first step to getting the sidewalk, the water sewer lines, the utilities, everything in a public right of way that is not on somebody's fee simple tract. And also just to note to Glenda, it is not steep slope, it is below the 2,200 elevation contour, so it is not in that area.
Right.
So if that helps. Now, the school is, part of the school property is, you start getting above 2,200, so, but we're not here.
I'm good with questions for you.
Yeah, I've, he's answered them.
Okay, and I have Ms. Nansky, right?
Ms. Nansky.
Ms. Nansky, Ms. Nansky. I told her, I apologized earlier.
Okay, and so do you have my PowerPoint?
Now we're gonna get all the answers.
I did download, let me see, I didn't get, let me see if I've got that one.
Okay.
I got the three, I got the photos. And I have got the.
Do you want me to hook up my laptop?
Might be quicker for yours, because I didn't think, I didn't see a Dropbox. It might have got caught in this.
No, I just emailed it.
Okay, all right, that.
Sorry, guys.
See if it hooks on the other side. Might be a different board on the opposite side.
On the opposite side. Is that an HDMI? I only have HDMI. Okay.
Her's like a USB type port.
Yes. I did email it.
Yeah, let me see. Let me check real quick.
Sure. Well, and I think I'll go through the whole presentation just to give you an idea of who we are and what we do. Hi, I'm Christina Znansky, I'm here on behalf of Hawthorne. So regarding parking, first of all, the average age of a resident is 84. And so as we'll talk about with the presentation, what we do is really about a suite of services. So the suites themselves are not independent dwelling units, they're not apartments. They have a small kitchenette with a sink and a three-quarter fridge to give our residents that sense of independence. But in reality, we're serving three meals a day from a commercial kitchen and a central dining room. Meals are served restaurant style. We have onsite management who are available 24 hours a day and they live in the building. We have a passenger van that holds 15 as transportation services. We do weekly housekeeping as well as linen service. And about 30% of our building is shared common space for all the residents. So we've got a movie theater, a beauty salon, cafe, gathering spaces, computer rooms, things like that. As well as, as Ricky mentioned, onsite activity areas outside. We've got raised garden beds, we've got an outdoor fire pit, outdoor kitchen, and some seating areas. And one of the big things we do on our site is we have a sidewalk that loops the building because walking is a big activity for our residents. And typically, moving into a building like ours, it's a residence first move out of their home. Our residents tend to be single widows and widowers. And this is a community lifestyle that they're choosing to live in. And a lot of times what comes with that is giving up the car keys. So when we plan our parking, our parking is really planned for the first two years when we're filling up. Because residents move in and they're not quite ready to give up the car keys. So we have enough spaces that they can leave their car. But honestly, after four or five months, they get to know the van driver, the van driver's taking people shopping and to doctor's appointments and things like that. And slowly but surely, the maintenance of the car, the, you know, insurance, things like that, they give up their car keys and we're driving them around. We have about 90 buildings in operation in the United States right now. Do I have, are there pictures? I have pretty pictures. I mean, I can just. I'll go backwards, I'll probably repeat myself a little bit. Did that work?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So Ricky did a great job of explaining the site, the site area. One of the things to note is there is a stream along the northern property line. And the reason why I bring that up is because when we're looking. That didn't like it. When we're looking at the site plan, one of the things we are required is to have a buffer from the residential uses to the north. With that stream, we're also required to have a 30-foot no-impact area. So the couple of areas where you see new trees are the areas where that 30-foot buffer is reduced to less than 15. So our plan is to preserve as much of the existing vegetation along that string bank and then infill where needed with additional evergreen screening. Also on that side of the building is our single-story van garage, which also helps sort of act as a buffer to those residential uses to the north. As Ricky mentioned, there's a couple of apartment buildings, one single-family home that barely touches on that triangular corner. And then a larger piece of land that has a handful of manufactured homes on it. Ricky mentioned that we do have retaining walls. So we have about 70 feet of grade from the eastern property line to the western property line. And so what we've really tried to do is balance the site so that the cut and fill is, is pretty equalized between the two. The other thing is, is when you're talking about the building height, we were very aware of, you know, any potential impacts to the school that is up the hill from us. So when you're looking at our 55-foot height, it's to the peak of the building because that's the way the height is measured in the ordinance. So that's to the ridge line of the roof. But we do have about 35 to 40 feet of grade change along that property line. So with the existing vegetation from the school and with the design of the building, we won't have any visual impacts to properties that are up, up the hill. So a little bit about Hawthorne, so the principles of the company started developing this particular type of what we call congregate living in the early 80s. And so the company has had a handful of different names through the years. But we have been doing this for quite a long time. And one of the great things about Hawthorne is, I'm here on behalf of the development company and the construction company as well as the operator. So we don't get it entitled and then sell it to somebody else. We develop it, we construct it, and then we operate it. So right now, we have 13 buildings currently in operation in North Carolina. The closest is in Asheville, it's the Bella Vista Building. I don't know if you're familiar, familiar with it, but it has the same model that we're gonna be doing here in terms of how we care for our residents. We also have three, including Woodfin, we have three that are in development that we hope to start construction in the next year. So as I mentioned about our residents, our average age right now is 84 across our buildings. Generally, our residents are in good health. We do not offer medical care, so we're not an assisted living building. We really are congregate living, it's a community. And it's that time when, you know, cleaning the bathroom is a struggle, making three meals a day is tough, driving to the doctor's appointment becomes uncomfortable. And this really gives our residents a sense of community and knowing that they're cared for and someone is checking in on them every day. So we talked about the private suites. So there are studio, one-bedroom and two-bedroom options. And as you can see, there's the little kitchenette, you know, so you can have a coffee pot, you can have snacks. But in general, our meals are served in our central dining room. And as I mentioned, we have, offer weekly housekeeping and linen service. We provide three chef-prepared meals a day. There's also a little snack area that serves coffee and like grabbable snacks throughout the day. We offer a private dining room that's available, so if residents have family who's coming to visit, maybe it's Mother's Day or a birthday, they can reserve that space and have their family join them for a meal. Onsite management is available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, they live onsite. We have emergency pull cords next to the bed and also in the bathroom. So if residents ever have an emergency, they can pull that cord and it'll notify the manager on duty. As I mentioned previously, we have a van, transportation, a 15-passenger van that takes residents to planned outings, to doctor's appointments, shopping, things like that. 30% of our building is common shared space for all residents. We have an onsite activities director who's constantly keeping a schedule of different activities, whether it's walking clubs or a luau or senior prom. We offer classes, it might be Tai Chi, or we do some workout classes, like seated workout classes in the gym. It's a picture of a couple of our spaces, our TV room and our gym. This is our movie theater, complete with popcorn machine. It's important. So I really love this space. So this is our bistro, it's on our main floor, it's right outside of our activity area. So this is one space where we do have a full oven. And what I love about this is that if grandkids are visiting grandma, there's a place where they can make cookies and they can use the oven and they can bake. There is also an ice cream machine, a self-serve ice cream machine that is very popular with our gentleman residents. Here's our library and game room. And so all of these services that we talked about, the onsite management, everything, it's not all apart. It's all included in, in the monthly rent. It includes all of the utilities, other than personal phone, all of the services that we mentioned. And there's no costly buy-in. It's just a standard monthly rent like you would in an apartment, first and last month's rent as a deposit and then a monthly fee. Some facilities, if you've heard about them, you have to sell your house and give them all your money. That's not how we operate. So here are just some photos of some, some of the different architectural designs that we do and some of the outdoor areas that we have. Some of our buildings have putting greens, the raised garden beds, the fire pit. Here's some more outdoor gathering spaces. Some buildings have a pool. This, this site's a little tight for a pool. Some more areas. So here's the architectural design that we have come up with for this building. This is the view of our main entry and our pickup drop-off area. You can see that we've used natural colors and materials to sort of blend in with the environment. We pride ourselves on having a beautifully landscaped site, a park-like setting for our residents. And then here's the view of the entry from the street. So you can see we've got some building articulation, we've broken up the roof line with different gables. We've got resident patios and decks. As well as, you know, some visual articulation with the colors and materials. So one thing I wanted to talk about just real quick so that we're all on the same page. When we were reading through the lighting ordinance, we knew that this was sort of our opportunity to ask for what we wanted or what we needed. Typically, we do a ground-mounted monument sign with a single light that points up at the sign. On this particular site, you can see in the little image, the sign is planned for the uphill side of the entryway. So there should be no light bleed on adjacent properties because everything is, it's a hill behind the sign. We're not, it's not a sword we're gonna fall on if this kind of light is absolutely not allowed. We had talked to Ricky about maybe doing lights from the top that point down at the sign. The way the lighting ordinance is currently written, it just says no external illumination. So then the only other option is to have it lit from the inside, which just isn't typically what we do. That's a little more commercial than what we would expect. So again, we are a low-impact use. So again, we are a low-impact use, low-traffic volumes. Our residents, as you can see, the community is there. They're staying inside the building. They're interacting with their friends. And when they are leaving, hopefully they're leaving with their friends in the van. We pride ourselves on a park-like setting. And we really serve the residents that are already here. So typically, our residents come from within ten miles of the site or their children live within ten miles of the site. So one of the great things is to, especially in a town like Woodfin that is growing rapidly, is when residents move into our building, they're also freeing up housing stock for the new families that are moving to the area. And that's it. Did that answer your questions?
I think my two cents on the light is just personally, I would prefer the downlighting coming off the top. And some of that is just to help prevent light pollution going up into the, the starry sky, so to speak. I know it's minimal, but if we could think about that instead of pushing light up, that would be awesome.
Okay.
I think the idea's great. I think it's a needed project in our area. Certainly, the, there is an older community here that needs this type of living facility, I think.
Do you have any intention of, of forming any relationship with the Harmony? Or which does have another level of care at least. I don't know if they do nursing home or not, but nursing care, but they do have assisted living.
Well, I don't know, I don't know about a relationship per se. At the moment, we don't necessarily see them as competition. They remain ninety to ninety-five percent full with a waiting list. And so those are the kind of things that when we're moving into a community and we're looking, we're looking at the demographics, we're looking at the existing facilities, and what we see right now is an unmet need. So we don't necessarily see ourselves taking residents away from them, but giving residents of Woodfin another option.
Will you be employing folks from Woodfin? Or I'm sure some of the upper management might come early, but what is the, the new town kind of higher job possibilities that might come? How many people do you employ, I guess, is the question?
So we typically have about thirty-six employees total. That includes full-time and part-time. We have eighteen that are full-time. So, you know, we have like housekeepers and things like that that are local. Typically, the, the two people that come in outside are the senior managers. And then the co-managers are hired more locally and also the chef. And typically, it's because they have been trained at other facilities and then they come to this and this becomes their building. But other than that, everyone is hired locally.
Any other questions, Jeff?
I'll leave, I'll email. Mine's on the far side. It's not town, town-related.
It's fully sprinkled with the third...
I just, I know what some policies that one has, Harmony has, and I need to know about the same kind of policies if you have them there. So, so we'll, we'll talk.
Well, I, I, I think we're inclined to approve, but it goes to the board of council people from us, right? This does, yes?
That's the next stop. So if you make a posi- whatever your recommendation is, it goes to town council, which...
The suggested motion.
Yeah, I've got that up here.
I've, I've printed it.
Shannon, that, um, and this is just kind of going back to some of potentially the comprehensive plan stuff, but the, the retaining wall, the, the height of that retaining wall, is that, wasn't that something that we were talking about? And maybe that's why it was brought up. I guess there's the, one of the zoning conditions is they want to make the retaining wall bigger than what we had originally discussed?
So you, you probably are remembering a zoning amendment that we did in Steep Slope.
Yeah.
That limited the height of the walls.
Okay.
And this property was not.
That was specific to Steep Slope. Okay, cool.
So there's no modification being sought for the retaining wall on this project. It's not necessary on this project. But it is part of that compatibility. The, the applicant's plans include some landscaping in front of the walls to kind of help soften them and minimize their impact. And the, at least that eastern wall will be eclipsed to a good degree by the building depending on the perspective.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Or the elevation change.
Thank you.
And we are experimenting with giving you the suggested motion in the slide in case that's easier than trying to find it in your stack before.
So the one through six things we don't have to include in the motion?
They're next slide.
We want you to read them.
Yeah. I got them next slide, babe.
And, and, you know, the more point, I know it's a pain to read, but the more points that we include in a, in a suggested motion or a consistency statement is, is really a good thing because it shows stronger alignment with the town's comprehensive plans.
All right. You ready for me to move, make a motion?
If you're ready, I'm ready.
Okay. I move to approve the conditional zoning of six-point-five-eight acres as shown in Exhibits A and B and find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, is consistent with the Town of Woodfin comprehensive plan and meets the development needs of the community in that, in that the request, one, promotes economic development by providing compatible infill development of undeveloped properties within the town; two, increases the density around transportation corridors; three, promotes an urban style of development near a major commercial corridor; four, provide pedestrian paths throughout the town to allow residents to walk to work and services while increasing safe options for those wishing to walk for transportation or recreation; five, the site design encourages walking and promote connectivity between parcels and development projects; a sidewalk connects the project to business and services; and six, adds to the range of housing options in the community supporting an underserved demographic.
And I think I heard you all also wanted the condition that the LED or that the sign light be revised.
That, that was just my thought.
Well, I think you should put it in though if you feel, I mean, it should be seven.
So if you support that motion, then I would just recommend that you do your motion with the condition that the lighting on the sign be revised.
Like if you don't, if you two don't really care about it, I'm on board. It was just my thought.
No, I, I think it's a good, I, I, I feel like you know more about that than I do, so I trust your judgment. But I, I, yes, I just want to add to the motion, but I'm not sure I can restate it. So can you put the wording in that you want?
It's just the downlighting versus the uplighting.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess it's...
You prefer downlighting to uplighting and it, that would be part of what we are approving.
And I would agree with the applicant that, that uplighting externally illuminated sign would be more residential in character than an internally illuminated sign, which is more...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't think internal, yeah, I think the external sign is the way.
And, you know, the ordinance is moving towards, you know, dark sky compliance. And, you know, so having those kind of downward-directed lights are, are the preferences.
Will be ahead of the game.
Yes.
Okay, I made that motion. Jeff?
All in favor? Aye. That's three. Awesome. So that one carries two. Congratulations.
Thank you.
See you at the commissioners' meeting. Cool. So the next order of business, we're on to number two, is Ricky, you want to explain this one too?
Okay, so you have, actually, it's kind of, it's a text amendment. It's kind of two pieces. I'll explain it to them. The first portion is probably easier to follow. It's basically authorizing the town manager to designate the zoning administrator. The code right now has language that says every time you either, you need to either designate a new person or if there's a change in staffing, if I was going on FMLA, we'll have to go back to the town council to do that. Most ordinances already give that authority to the town manager. And so it just basically makes it quicker if there's somebody with better specialty in what line of work they're doing. Or if I am out sick for extended leave, Ms. Tuck can either fill in for me or appoint somebody else like that. And so that's, that's the easy one. The other one is, the, the bigger one is basically we're going to consolidate, looking to consolidate the planning board and the board of adjustment into a planning board of adjustment. So one board that would serve all functions that are legislative and quasi-judicial matters. So, so basically I said, key point on fifty-four thirty-two, the first one, zoning administrator designated by Mrs. Tuck. The other one basically collapses zoning, the zoning chapter fifty-four, sixty-nine through eighty-four. So it'd be planning board and board of adjustment into one. We're looking to expand that board's membership, the regular membership, to seven members to review legislative matters, which is like text amendments and rezonings. And then within that, five regular members would be designated to hear and vote on the quasi-judicial matters. So that would be a variance or a special use permit. So seven appointed, five of them would then move into the, what would be board of adjustment. And two of those persons would still be alternates. So seven people are here. And then just as a restating, variances are supermajority, four-fifth vote. All others, we decided by the simple majority. Is important to know about variances, state law says you have to have four out of five, no matter what the board composition is, four-fifths. If only four people show up for the board of adjustment or quasi-judicial, you have to have all four votes vote for you. A lot of applicants are very hesitant to not have a spare to lose in the board of adjustment. So if we had that, two alternates here already, it's easy. If somebody has a conflict or has to leave unexpectedly, we could quickly move to have that person fill in without having to end the hearing right there. Staff is obviously recommending the text amendment as proposed. And I do have a suggested motion, but I figure y'all may have some questions for us that's...
I'm surprised we have to rec- recommend it. I mean, if the, if the board, if the council people approved the merger, why do, does our committee even need to vote on it?
Well, state law requires text amendments to go to a planning board for consideration first.
Okay.
And so if, if you don't act at all, was it sixty-day session, it automatically goes to council anyway if they don't decide?
And you don't have to recommend approval. We just have to get, get your recommendation and carry that recommendation to the council. So they'll vote on it either way. And you are correct that unlike a lot of our text amendments, this was a directive from the council. So the council said, we want you to, staff to move forward with combining those boards. Please do so. And it does require a text amendment, which is why it's before you. Now, a lot of the text amendments you receive, council may give us very general direction. Like they may say, we want you to update the code to improve walkability. And then it's up to us to kind of figure out what that might be and then we bring it to you and we have discussion. So this is a little bit different and I think that might be what your sense.
Do we, do we actually make a motion then and everything? Okay. So do you guys, I, I mean, I feel like we got all this sent to us, so I, I didn't feel you were...
Yeah, yeah, we're presenting kind of what was the instruction. But if y'all have some questions or need to discuss it, we're glad to answer that because...
You got mine earlier beforehand, so...
Yeah, but you, but it, that's the point of the discussion is if you have questions, so you understand because your board is impacted by the, the basic merger, so it's...
Can I just say that in the two or three years I've been involved, we have gone back and forth between a merged group and a not merged group and being alternates or not? So I don't find it challenging.
So one of the reasons, I mean, I think you all understand the history of starting with a merged group and then it was split because the town was receiving so many development applications and was having so many lengthy hearings that it was overwhelming for one body. And so it was thought, and it is generally considered to split them because the, the nature of the decisions are fairly different and the proceedings can be a little bit different. But smaller municipalities, it's more common to have them combined just because it's a resource issue.
Well, when you look at the challenge we have getting quorum sometimes and that, to me, that's a big reason. And if it makes it easier for the staff to manage, I think that's another really good reason.
The town has now also taken steps in updating the development code. So we're having fewer of those very long conditional use permit hearings. And so now you're going to see more of what you saw this evening with the Hawthorne project. It's going to be more legislative, it's going to be conditional zoning, which is usually a little bit easier to get through. And you don't have to follow the same quasi-judicial rules that would apply to a conditional use permit or a special use permit.
Well, I support it, but I don't have any idea what you guys think.
My, my only question was, you know, I asked Ricky was, I thought when they split the board, it was because of a state statute, like that's why we had to split the board.
That's what we were told.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that is...
Which now is kind of like, wait, state statute's out the window. Let's go back.
Well, I think it's inaccurate to say that it's because of the statute. What the statute says is you must have a body to perform legislative planning board-type responsibilities and you must have a body that performs your quasi-judicial board of adjustment. It does not necessarily have to be two separate bodies. You just have to have two separate functions, which we are proposing to maintain. It's just would be performed by one group.
That, that was my biggest question. I was like, I thought that was supposed to happen. But other than that, I, I think it's a great idea and I'm kind of on Glenda's side here too is that, I mean, we're sitting in here right now with three when we should have five, you know, of, of people that are engaged in the community. So I'm, I mean, I'm for it.
Jeff?
I'm for it.
So make a motion.
Jeff, you want to read this one?
I can see it. "I move to approve the proposed text amendment and find that it is reasonable, is in the public interest and consistent with the Town of Woodfin comprehensive plan and meets the development needs of the community in that the request, one, provides additional clarity and predictability to development requirements, thereby supporting economic development and, number two, ensures that the town's planning, zoning, and permitting process facilitate sustained and positive development and support the needs of business and industry."
I second it.
Awesome. All in favor? Aye. That's three. That one will carry two, guys.
Thank y'all.
So question on that, you have, if you want to, like, say, step down, do you need to know or...
She sent...
Did you not get the email?
I did get the email.
Yeah.
Well, what does it say in email?
Maybe I didn't reach it. You stay out of my purse.
You can reply to the email or after we adjourn, you're welcome to just let us know what your decision is.
Oh, all right. I thought it was just like if you were interested, to reply to the email.
No, I know, I know what you're saying, man. You're a busy man. You stand on top of stuff. Cool. That's the last bit of business, so unless anybody's got anything else, if somebody wants to make...
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I, oh, and I second it.
All right, all in favor?
Well, I mean, there's only two of us. We'll just take turns.
We are adjourned. Thanks, guys.
Next meeting in a second.